Hello.
Hello.
It does go away.
Hey, Chris. A lot of, you learn a lot watching, if it was out there, fire, firefighters. You learn a lot watching a fire like that.
Yeah, sure.
It's, it feels kind of arrogant to say that, you know, sitting there watching that fire, you could learn as much as you can. But there's a bunch of stuff that I didn't know, and I was a pretty good student of all of that stuff, and I had no idea. Thirty-year-old fire. It makes it way worse than if there was no fire there. It's like a huge, it comes up with all that brush and everything, and it goes over, goes over the top of it. Yeah, everywhere the fire went, you could see it, go through that thirty-year-old fire. You go, there you go. So it was, it was interesting. A little distressing for the big picture of all the impacts, and that's been a long time. Any difference in the wildlife around Chase? The, our area never really had, we never overrun, hang on, like this here. We are now.
I'll bring the Tuolumne County Planning Commission of November 6th to order, please. Please arise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, starting out with Planning Commission business, first item, reports from commissioners and staff. Any commissioner have a report? Yes.
Yes, I would like to report on the California County Planning Commission Association. We had our conference, once-a-year conference, and it turned out to be a very successful conference. We had sixty-six commissioners there, and basically, we had probably about eighty altogether. And it was, kind of had a great time. We went and seen Water Works, and they got to tour the Forty-Niners' new stadium, and it was very educational, and so we're looking forward to the next year. And I don't, there's a couple more commissioners here that may want to report on it.
Any other reports, commissioners? Seeing none, staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to remind commissioners about the AB 1234 Ethics Training that County Council is providing next Thursday, November fourteenth, from ten till twelve here in the boardroom. If you haven't signed up yet, you can contact County Council's officer, let us know, and we'll get you registered for that. If you don't want to attend that session or not required to this year, it is also available online, and I believe that Ms. Monseign has advised everyone who does need to take it this year, so. I'd also like to mention that, if you recall, at your last meeting, you approved the monument sign for the Dollar General project in Jamestown with the stipulation that they could not have interior illumination. It had to be external with a floodlight or some other type of lighting. They appealed your decision to the Board of Supervisors, and the board did grant them the approval without specifying the exterior illumination. They said it would be fine to have it inside, so. Just wanted to update everyone on that. And then, we do not have any items for your meeting on November twentieth, so we'll be canceling that meeting, so we will see you all again then in December, and we do expect to have some items in December.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item, report from the Board of Supervisors, Planning Committee Representative. Who's that?
I'm one of them. I can state that we did not have a meeting.
That's fair.
Or no report.
Very good, okay, thank you. Report from the Agriculture Advisory Committee Representative.
Exact same comment, no meeting, no report.
You're getting off pretty easy this month, yeah. Okay, report from the Historic Preservation Review Commission Representative.
Yes, no meeting.
Okay, finally, minutes of the meeting of September eighteenth. A very complete set of minutes, I might add, and I read them, I thought they were right on target. Any comments on the meeting, on the minutes? If not, like a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Second, motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so ordered.
Abstained.
Abstained, one abstention, Mr. Baker was not here. Okay, public comment. Anybody is welcome to address the commission on any item that's not on the agenda. Welcome to come forward and so state. Don't see anybody, so we'll close the public comment, and we'll go to our public hearings. First item, Nathan and Stephanie Woodhams on a zone change. Have a staff report on that, Ms. Shane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Nathan and Stephanie Woodhams own two parcels that are located in the Long Barn Lodge subdivision. The parcel that is the subject of the rezoning this evening is located at 22894 Woodend Drive. They are asking for your support this evening to rezone that one-half acre parcel from RE2, residential, state two-acre minimum, to R1, single-family residential, to facilitate a merger of their two parcels. The parcel is designated low-density residential by the general plan, so the proposed R1 zoning is consistent with the general plan. Their other parcel is already zoned R1, and as you are aware, the county zoning ordinance does not allow the creation of more primary zoning districts on the parcel. So if you merge two parcels that have two different zonings into one, they would have two different zoning districts then, so they are asking to rezone this parcel in order to merge those parcels because it was found that the residence was built across the property boundary, and also, the septic system is actually on the project site and not on the other parcel, which they had thought. So they do want to merge the parcel in order for them to have the building on one parcel rather than straddling a property line.
Any questions of staff? Commissioner Morrow?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to divulge that I did go out and I looked at the site.
And I'll do the same, I went out today.
Right. Any other, any questions, staff? Seeing none, okay. This is a public hearing, those in favor of the project, welcome to come up first, address the commission.
Thanks, Commissioners, my name's David Ragland, I'm the Woodhams' land surveyor. And just to clarify, they want to replace a deck and can't get a building permit to build something across the property line. And so they're merging these properties even though they might have done a lotline adjustment and preserved the extra potential building sites, but they're merging them, they're reducing density, bringing it into conformance with the density that's allowed by the general plan, and no change to the exterior boundary is proposed of these two parcels. We just want the property line going through the building erased, and that's about all I have, thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Ragland? Don't see any, thank you very much. Anybody else wish to address the commission in favor of the project? Okay, I don't see any. Anybody wish to address the commission in opposition to the project? I don't see any. Anybody wish to address the commission neutrally? Don't see anybody, and with that, we'll close the public hearing on this item, bring the matter back to the board. Staff recommendation is found on page four, or we can have further discussion, whatever your pleasure is. Commissioner Latori.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just had one quick question. It's kind of an oddity, the only joiner who wrote in opposition said, should not, that the applicant should not be able to get any of the property across the street, and I was curious if the Director Shane knew what that was about, and also, there was a note that says, "See backside," and I wondered if you had, what was written on the backside, maybe that clarified that.
On the backside of there?
It's in handwriting.
I'll have to check the file for that, because I only have the front printed in the Agenda package. And I don't believe any of the property straddles a road, perhaps Mr. Ragland might be more familiar with that.
You want to come up?
Oh, looks like this is a little map that they showed.
The only thing that I can think of is along the, the, along the northwesterly boundary of the property, there is a road easement, and my surveyor in looking for corners out there was approached by a neighbor who said, "Make sure you're not on my property." I think that's, I think that may be what this is about.
Okay, thank you very much. That satisfy you, John?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any comments?
I'd be glad to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Make a motion to rezone, change RZ13008 based upon the following findings, A through D.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Any public input? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so ordered. Thank you. Second item, has to do with the, one of the favorite subjects over many, almost twenty years, I guess, signage in Tuolumne County. And we have a staff report on signage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is a proposed change to the Tuolumne County Ordinance Code to add sections 3.40.010P2E and 3.40.010P36 to establish fees for encroaching permits for directional signs in county rights-of-way, and also to add an appeal fee for those who wish to appeal any decisions under our road requirements. This ordinance also includes adding a new chapter, 12.06, to establish standards for directional signs in the county rights-of-way. What this would do is provide a mechanism for businesses and owners of other types of facilities to have directional signs posted within the county right-of-way. For example, for a golf course, for a winery, for something like that, or a church. The basis for this is public safety. We have, as you know, intersections that sometimes are confusing, and we have out-of-state visitors or out-of-town visitors who are sometimes looking for things, and this would be a way to have a standardized sign program to direct people to these facilities. So it's, again, they're not looking around so much, they'll know better where to go, and so it's a public safety issue as well as a benefit to those facilities. The ordinance changes also include adding a new section, 1704026, to provide a definition for advertising media, and adding a definition for banners, which we don't currently have, and doing a comprehensive update of chapter seventeen point six-two of the zoning ordinance, which are our sign regulations on private property. The changes to the county's sign regulations on county property, excuse me, on private property, include increasing the maximum height of a sign from thirty-two feet to thirty-six feet, modifying the section regarding the appearance of signs to provide clarification on what we mean, expanding on the signs allowed for firms and individuals connected with construction. We've always allowed contractor put a sign out, say that when they're building a project, this expands on that to recognize that there are, could be multiple businesses involved in a construction project, and they can have their signs out there while the project's under construction. It includes allowing memorial signs and plaques to be on a property in addition to the total signage allowed. It allows increasing the maximum amount of detached signs from thirty-two square feet to thirty-six square feet, and allows businesses that have small furnitures, right now, as you know, the sign ordinance says you get one square foot of attached signs per lineal foot, so if you only have a twenty-foot wide building, you only get twenty square feet. This change would allow them to have a minimum of thirty-six square feet. So regardless of the size of your building, you get at least thirty-six square feet. We would add a section that would provide for barber pole signs and signs on sales lots for automobiles and gas stations. Right now, our sign ordinance doesn't really address those types of signs, and this would provide for them and the restrictions under which they are allowed. We'd also be adding some opportunities through a use permit for businesses to have information boards, currently we allow non-commercial community information boards, but if a group of businesses wanted to go together to say, "Welcome to Standard," and have the business names on there, we don't currently allow that, but this would allow it. They could have animated signs through a use permit, additional banners, things like that, so anything that we didn't address for signage in the ordinance could be done through a conditional use permit, so this is providing more flexibility for businesses. And we are also adding a section that would require removal of signs within ninety days after a business ceases. This is actually was genesis of this ordinance update many years ago. Members of the Planning Commission brought up the issue of the fact that businesses close, and yet signs were often up for years, and did we have any restrictions about that? And the answer was no. So we started on this update many years ago, it got put on the back burner because there were some court cases that came out, and County Council wanted to deal with free speech issues, and a lot of that went away when we modified design review recently. So we were able to resurrect this ordinance and did take it to the Board of Supervisors' Planning Committee, and it's meeting on August fifteenth, and the committee made a few changes to the ordinance and endorsed it, and then we took it to the Board of Supervisors on October first, and the board said, "It looks good, it's ready for the Planning Commission to consider it." So you will be making a recommendation this evening to the Board of Supervisors, who will consider adoption of the ordinance on December third. Mr. York is here to answer any questions you might have about those proposed signs in county rights-of-way, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions about the ordinance.
I'm curious about one thing, the enforcement of this. Is it complaint-driven, or?
Yes.
Like, everything else is complaint-driven?
Except the ones in the right-of-way. Obviously, if someone doesn't come and get the encroaching permits, puts up their own signs, we already have the authority to remove those if there are safety hazards.
Understand, okay, thank you. Okay, question of staff, Commissioner Morrow?
Mr. Chairman, if I may address Mrs. Shane, I have a question for her. If you would turn to page eight of thirteen and look in section seventeen point two sixty-two zero three oh.
What was that page number again?
That was eight of thirteen.
Eight, okay.
And then up above, if you might look at, "No sign shall have, consist of any moving, rotating, or animated components or flashing." I got a call today from Twainhart Family Barber Shop, and he has a light on his barber pole. Is that legal?
Well, it's not now, but as I mentioned, we are adding a provision for the barber poles, and let me just find it.
Is the barber pole animated?
Yes, because it turns.
It does, it rotates.
It rotates, it turns.
Okay, it's animated, I guess.
Yes. On page eleven, there's a new F proposed, it says, "The following animated signs shall be permitted, subject to the above restrictions." And one says, "An on-premise barber pole of traditional design of a length not to exceed thirty inches, which shall be permitted to evolve during the time that a barber shop is open for business, and the top of the sign shall be no more than AP, blah, blah, blah." So we are going to allow barber poles to turn.
That's pretty well covered, I'd say.
I'll get back to him and tell him.
Yeah, tell him, yeah.
Soon it will be legal.
Tell him you took care of it tonight.
Take credit, yeah.
Other, other questions of staff? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Ringan.
I guess this would be to Mrs. Shane also. I read all this exciting stuff, and I probably missed it, but on the signs that are from businesses that have failed, who is the lucky one that gets to remove those?
Well, it's, the business's responsibility, or the landlord ultimately, because a lot of these are in leased buildings. Enforcement would be through a complaint to our co-compliance staff.
That would go then to the owner of the property?
Go to the owner of the property, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, staff? Okay, don't see any, public hearing, anybody wish to speak in favor of the proposal? Don't see anybody? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Don't see anybody? Anybody wish to speak neutrally? I don't see anybody. Close this public hearing, bring the matter back to the board. Supervisor, Commissioner Latori.
You got a promotion.
Thanks for the promotion. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I had a question for staff that I wasn't quick enough to get it in earlier. You're just too quick for me. My question is on page three of thirteen. In the third paragraph, twelve oh six oh seven oh, in the middle of the paragraph, it says, "If directional signs become warped, chipped, vandalized, or deteriorated, the county may remove such signs." And I wonder if we should make a provision for the county to hold on to those signs for a time, like ninety days or something, in case the owner of the sign successfully takes out a permit to reinstall them, and then doesn't find them thrown away, he may want to reuse them. Or conversely, if the county doesn't want to hold on to them, I wonder if we should make a provision in the code authorizing the county to dispose of them.
Duke York, Deputy Director for the Roads Division. One of the things you have to realize is these directional signs, the way we've incorporated them currently, most of these signs tend to be guide signs or directional signs. They tend to be signs that have, meet retro-reflectivity standards, usually white on blue, white on brown. The ones you've seen are the golf courses, the wineries, have a generic symbol. We had to do one recently over by the Chicken Ranch Casino because people were taking the wrong road, they're taking Nelson Road instead of going up Chicken Ranch, so I see that being more the type that we're going to see, and not to say that's limited to that, but that's more the type. So what happens is, you got, let's see, decayed, faded, warped, chipped, vandalized, there's the big one right there, vandalized. They get shot, they get sprayed on, they get things, yeah, and quite often, these things, if they become a hazard by virtue of the fact that somebody's squinning, trying to read them, or trying to figure out what they were, slow down, oh yeah, let me see, if that hole, if I take that hole out, it would have been worded this way. If they become a hazard, we'll take them out, because they're put there to benefit the traffic, is what, I can say, directional, guide signs, that sort of thing. If, for example, I can think of one in your district in particular that kind of led to a lot of this, there was a need to get people to go to the right place to the casino, because there was, you were at that intersection, and they were going to put up a really nice decorative sign, and on, I think on the backside, it was going to say, "Well, thank you for visiting Tuolumne," or something like that. That one was going to be a little nicer unit, and yeah, that could fade or warp. Generally speaking, they might go in there and renovate it, paint it, stain it, replace a board here and there. We were generally not going to pick it up, because it's a monument sign or something. We also just recently did one where, Miwok, where they had an old sign, it's rotted, and they wanted to replace it, and then put in a monument sign that was a little nicer for the entrance to the subdivision. That's another good example, you see quite often these subdivision signs saying, "Ranchers' Paquitos," I don't know how many times a car has hit that particular sign, but that's an example of what we're talking about here, so.
My question was, if the county finds it necessary to remove a sign, but the materials that the sign is made of belongs to the property owner?
It doesn't. The directional signs we're talking about are going to be small signs with an arrow and the name of the business, and the applicant pays a fee for the county to fabricate these signs and install them. So they're really paying to have their name on a county sign, if you will. And that way, when it's damaged, we're going to remove it, and if they want to have it replaced, then they will pay a lesser fee, but there is an additional fee.
Quite often, the post, the vertical post is still intact, but the sign itself is shot, so we notify them, "Hey, we'll leave the post there for you, but if you want to, if you have the money right now, you can pay to put a new sign up, but if you don't, you can wait until you do have the money."
Okay, yes, Commissioner Morrow?
One more follow-up question from Mrs. Shane. Car lots, I know it talks a great deal about car lots and banners. They usually put these little signs in each of the cars, in the windows, and so on, that isn't a sign, is it? That's just?
It is, yes, it is, and right now, the ordinance code doesn't allow it, so.
They do, or they don't?
We do not allow it, but this will allow it.
Okay.
Which is proposed, and in fact, the Planning Committee recommended they be larger, so what's proposed is they would get two, two square feet of signs attached to the window detailing the automobile statistics, and then two square feet of signs attached to the windshield, advertising, that's a four-by-four, whatever, that you commonly see, but right now, our ordinance code doesn't provide for that.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Baker?
I was at the Planning Committee when we went through this line by line. You guys all know how painful line-by-line analysis can be.
I've been there and done that, don't worry.
But I think, first, my opinion is, is that as a result of that, it was pretty darned thorough before we started, and the changes we made were in the spirit of two things, that should be pointed out. One was that where somebody is, when there's established practice that's not causing anybody's problem, let's make it legal, right? So, window, cars in the, signs in windows, how big are they now? How do we make it legal so we don't have any changes? And the other is... And the other is, there's a lot of guys, particularly little guys, that were getting penalized by the existing sets of rules because of the storefrontage thing.
Right.
You know, there was other commas and periods that went in there, but those two things, I think, affected a lot of what was in here, and I actually think they did a great job on it.
Yeah, good job. Yeah, Mr. York?
We get a lot of calls about, I'll use the term nuisance signs that pop up in the right-of-way, and they are a nuisance to both our road staff, because we have to clean them out. The ones that are kicked up on power poles in Twainhart and trees in Twainhart, and we have to go in and clean them out. I won't name businesses, but you all know who, who some of these people are, and, and it is a nuisance, and by providing some flexibility, not a lot, but we are providing for some of the key things here, but those small signs that so many people comment on, you know, these intersections that pop overnight, I want to be clear that the signage that we do allow, give me an example, you, you have a temporary sign that goes up for an open house, a yard sale. Help me out here, guys. Some of those kind of temporary signs that go up on a weekend and then come down, you know, we're not, that's not our deal. What we're talking about is permanent businesses, they're throwing up these things that they can get printed out, and they're posting them all over Timbuktu. That will continue to be inappropriate in the right-of-way because it does detract from scenery, so I just want to be clear on that point.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, don't see anybody, so, may I have a motion of some sort? Recommendations on page four?
Hey, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Like, as a member of the BOSBC, and having gone through it quite a bit, I'd recommend that, we recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending the Tuolumne County Ordinance Code based upon findings A through C.
Is there a second to that?
I'll say.
Motion second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Morrow?
I guess I'm just kind of making a statement. All in all, I think it's a good sign ordinance. There's a lot of things that we needed to do and redo, but what I'm really concerned about is all the illegal signs. I can take you down to any place in Tuolumne County and show you a hundred illegal signs, and I know that we don't have a code compliance officers anymore, or do we, Bev?
Our building inspectors do that, as well as all of their other work, but signs are under the zoning ordinance are only enforced on complaint basis, so we have to receive a complaint first.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think this is a good piece of work by the Planning Committee, Jerry, and hopefully it'll end the sign wars of Tuolumne County after all these years, hopefully.
I doubt it's that going to work.
I will call a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so ordered unanimously. I believe that wraps up our business, unless anybody's got anything for the good of the order. If not, this meeting is finished.
Thank you.
A record time.
Keep those agendas light, huh?